Okay, it's 5:30 and I'd like to call the board to bring your reading of the U.S. Supreme Court's view of the law. Love you. January. In our room with the U.S. Supreme Court. Okay, board. Good to see everybody again. We haven't seen much of each other, I know. Do we have a roll call?
Chris Greland.
Here.
Valerie Howe.
Here.
Joyce Ederson.
Here.
John Linder.
Here.
John Michael.
Here.
Bonnie Princeton.
Here.
Kathy Wade.
Here.
Kathy Wade.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to go ahead and make a quick announcement.
I would like to read to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Ray, or anything to add?
Anything to add.
Anything else? Pull out of the agenda. Okay. Where are we going to approve? Okay, my way. All's in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All's aye. Here. Okay. Do we need any public comments?
No.
Nobody signed up?
No.
Okay, the couple of bills payable, donations, January end payables, wires payer liabilities, amount of $2,388,000, $890,000, $0.70%. January 12 year old, amount of $256,000, $263,000, $0.20%. And Pittsburgh Board of Bills, amount of $168,723,000, $61.6. We have a couple of personnel actions, resignation of Doug Nelson and resignation of Diane Togan, Ellen Coopera, that's a library aide. Right, and a couple of hires, hire Benny Allen, assistant track and field coach, hire Bailey Parch, assistant track and field coach, and hire Shelby Miller, loaned from Subs for the library. Any comments on any of that?
Just comment on Mrs. Nelson's resignation. We're sorry to lose her. As I indicated to you, Beth has applied and accepted the position as the owner of the library for the community of Lyford. And so, we are indebted to her for her years of service. Not only did she assist with things that took place in the library, she also edited up our yearbook and then reading month activities and just a number of things that were integral parts of the library. So again, we're sad to see her go and we extend our thanks and appreciation for her years of service and wish her the best of luck for the new position.
Any additional comments on the exception agenda?
I would like one other addition. I hope that the board is... Item E, the donations that we received this month, in the amount of $2,700 is rewarding to have our community assist us. Most of those revolve around, some are rec donations and we rely on them to assist us. And so, we're very appreciative of the donations that we've received today for that undertaking that will be here hopefully soon, once the mountains melt away, so.
Okay, for a motion to approve the item, some consent agenda. All's in favor of approving item six, consent agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go. She carries. Moving on to an item of all business. There's, it's the approving the resolution of sale of the middle school building in Peterson and its contents to the neighborhood group LLC, Roger Anderson, in the amount of $40,000. $3,000 for the building, $10,000 for the contents, and authorizing the board chair and clerk to execute documents needed to complete the sale. I guess I, just before we go any further, I guess I'd like to just comment, I'm disappointed that going down this path, we did a standstill with Mr. Anderson for months and we got left with the offer and here we go again. So I hope it wasn't going to be different, but I would like to recommend that he pay the penalty, remember he agreed to pay that penalty of $3,000 for reaching the purchase agreement the first time, so I would like to see that included in the purchase right. And also, there are no extensions. This is a draft date that he isn't going to be able to come up with and move forward quickly. And I guess I'd like to authorize, have the board authorize the superintendent to move forward with other options immediately if this thing doesn't close. Welcome anyone else who spots on that matter.
Question. On both sides of the, opening the reports and so forth, closing the reports, we're going to have, is more than a hundred percent. So that can be pulled from the asset that they were, and what I think is, now, is what?
Right. Yeah.
Can you pay that $1,000 down? Can we ask for this part?
No, not this time, the previous time.
So this time, you know, they were supposed to, instead of $1,000, they...
Wait, we have a check that will always be in the amount of ten or something.
And, yeah, does that include the penalties?
It does now. I'll indicate that.
We have what is called a triumph over experience here. Do we just need to be proud of this? That's something that's going to weigh down a lot.
I guess I'm more inclined to collect the penalties before we even consider selling the school, the life and all this stuff. How long was this drug out before? How was the board then thought those, you know, part of Peterson? So, you know, yet everyone hopes up with these big dreams of a school there, which would be a great for the community and that has been presented. But there was no, there was no movement on it. Here we are again. And what a deal is getting the building for half price.
Right.
I agree. I was thinking you probably gave those penalties, so I wasn't there to talk about.
Definitely need to be added in there. Looks like one's the agreement.
I want to clarify that I was in capacity, I was about to say, for that, so.
Oh.
We have another board meeting for, for...
You do, you have a meeting on March 17.
Please.
Yes, March 18. Hopefully then we would have indications, so we would have something positive coming forward.
So, do the latest openings, meeting to approve it, or do you want this approved now? I would rather have a say with penalties and then see if it's serious.
I think we need the resolution in order for our school attorney to draft the resolution. I guess formally approve it, so that he can report.
If I have those conditions, um, the purchase...
Actually, we should have purchased, signed that agreement according to, also, what we're expecting.
Well, we, we signed it, but we're just supposed to have it signed. It said that the agreement had to sign right into the fight, so we're not going to.
We did, yes.
I guess, well, there is a signed purchasing agreement?
There is not, no. This is, this is the resolution, we're approving it and we'll give it to...
So what did he sign on?
He signed, he, he, he signed his preliminary agreement here that we presented to him.
Well, we can make this resolution contingent on all these things we discussed, the department.
Yeah, we're really glad to have you on.
Any else have any thoughts on that? I guess I would approve then, then for the $3,000 bounty, be paid immediately. There would be no extensions. And the, what's supposed to be, authorize, Miss Rayler to pursue other options if we don't need. Because we'll have a board meeting before this thing has to be closed, and we had anticipated it would be two days after that, so. That would be the, the motion I'd make.
I'm sorry, motion.
Any further discussion? This requires a roll call, board.
Chris Greland.
No.
Valerie Howe.
Aye.
Joyce Ederson.
Aye.
John Linder.
Yes.
Doug Michael.
Yes.
Bonnie Princeton.
Yes.
Kathy Wade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, approve the senior class trip to Florida, March 3rd through 29th.
Mr. Jim.
The Shining Club, lots of chaperones, I want to look.
This is an annual requirement by the board to approve the class trip.
I think motion would, would it?
I'll second that.
Wade, all's in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Say aye.
All's a no. She carries. Item B, approve the Spanish club trip to Costa Rica to 17th through 25th. Can you share?
And this is an every other year venture for them and they work really hard and raise the money to make sure that their foster met and they're in good shape for that.
I might make most of that.
Mr. Rayler, your second?
Yes.
Couple times. All's in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All's a no. She carries. Item C, approve the 19, 20 school year calendar. It's on page 26. And things like that. Yeah, Mr. Rayler?
Uh, no, we did share this and reflected on it in several different venues here and chose to come back on Thursday, January 2nd. Original proposal, we were saying to take two, four weeks off and then we looked at saying how it is nice to have the school ended prior to the June 1st date, so that's why we chose to make that adjustment and we have shared it with RPA and got their input as well.
We have any comments on the closed calendar? It won't have in a couple weeks, but...
It's no day. There are no such things anymore.
We look for a motion to approve the 19, 20 school year calendar.
I'll just motion to approve the 19, 20 calendar. Page 26.
Page 26, by Michael. All's in favor of approving the upcoming school year calendar, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All's a no. She carries. Item D, review of the 18, 19 school year calendar.
Wanted to do you to be aware of some of the challenges that we're facing, so counting today, we have nine days and as I indicated to you, the state allows us to utilize five learning days. So any days that we use beyond those five days, we do not get credit by the state for those. So you have to meet a minimum of 165 days, so as of now, we're, we have a, as of today, that would change from 171 to 170, so. Happy to entertain, any questions, concerns you have, I will advise the board that we would be seeking feedback from RPA as well as our staff to use March 29th, which is a scheduled in-service date for us, it's Friday, March 29th, to utilize that as a student contact day.
Is that the only available?
That is the only day available, but we would recommend it at this point.
Is there two snow days still there?
There is no, no.
No, no, there's no days at all?
We have no snow days unless we clarify on this section.
So the state minimum that says 165, put the board at 174, is that right?
Correct.
Go up four.
Again, we're looking for your input or approval that to, for us to explore, unless it's March 29th, this is, as a student contact day.
Do we need a motion?
I would, I would, yes, I would like to see a motion for that.
Well, I know that for that one, we didn't have that day. First, kind of...
Would you like to hold it? Your second?
My second. Yes.
Quick, wait.
There you go.
All's in favor of that one for the 29th, as a student contact day? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All's a no. She carries. Item E, review and approve the job description for the superintendent. Do we have a chance to go through that? There were a couple of things we talked about already.
I had one thing, I think it was just a, an error on the second page of the description. Upon, it's the last bullet under essential functions. It says regularly, we consult and building principals regarding their school's operations to assist in eliminating slash, and then I thought it should go correcting, eliminating and correcting, I don't know what it is. I'm very correct.
Sure. Any else is for, for more comment?
This time, I think we have a little bit of trouble. Yep, I like that, that's, that's good.
So I'm looking at what I've learned about, I just saw earlier, you said first thing now, just, I don't, or any suggestions, but when I'll delegate oversight, oversight responsibility to a corporate staff person, somebody that said, not just their personal absence, they wanted...
Yeah, that was me, okay. So I think that it wasn't in there yet, but I remember somebody saying it, so. Well, I look at the work hours. I mean, do we have to have work hours? I mean, they're...
I thought about two, because later we said, we'll probably have to work, you know, all hours of the day and night. But I thought, you probably, you probably do have to have a basis, like...
Basic, that's what I...
It is a Monday to Friday job.
A basic, okay.
I don't know.
That'd be the minimum work for... Any other comments?
You have one to stop on.
There's no other comments, to approve as annotated. My way. All's in favor of approving the annotated job description for the superintendent, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All's a no. She carries. Okay, for new business, moving on to reports.
Sure, my report begins on page 32, just a note of appreciation to you as school board members, last week was designated as school board appreciation. I don't know if that's a sign from above, or...
That's true.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Just the buildings, uh...
You had to talk that in these old meetings.
So again, my thanks and appreciation for your willingness to serve our students and our, and our district and our community, so thank you for your leadership. RPA, FFA, National FFA Week was hosted last week and they took some initiatives there to work with elementary as well as just with their own membership, so congratulations to them on a very good week. AAA recipients and Excel award recipients, I've listed the students there and we've extended our congratulations to them and appreciative of their leadership and for their serving as ambassadors for our school district. Seasons are coming to an end here, from one act lady to dance to winning sports team, so just a note of congratulations to all of those, the participants and their commitment and striving to do their best. We're very appreciative of their efforts along with the coaching staff as well. The speech season is underway and so to wrap the start, Mr. Musselman and Mrs. Michael are serving as our coaches. We're very pleased with the progress and growth of the speech participants and looking forward to not having too many interruptions. Last Saturday, their event was canceled due to the weather, but we know that we'll continue to face challenges on the weather front. Mr. Bebedore will update you on the winter sports teams here advancements as far as subsection and our LARP wrestlers that may have escaped, so. Just another to thank you for approving the early retirement incentive. I have shared that MOU with RPA, they have signed it and again, we're anticipating any requests to be turned into the district office by Wednesday, March 13th. This evening, I presented to you a handout from Governor Walz on his 2019 budget recommendation. I applaud him on his very aggressive initiative here and hope that the things that he has listed there and the things that he's addressing can come to fruition. Obviously, the biggest one for us is the formula increase, is, you'll notice in his proposal that he's in 3% for the fiscal year 2000, or 2020, and then 2021 is another 2% increase there on this per pupil formula, so that's very advantageous for us. And then the other items listed there are for your information and if you get a chance to reach out to our elected officials, I invite you to do so and if there's something there that catches your eyes, please let them know through a via email or a call that we're very excited to see these things be part of the educational initiatives here put forward by Governor Walz. And I did list in your packet this evening, I'm being sturdy for contact information for our legislators, so again, I invite you to reach out to them. Happy to entertain any questions you might have for me this evening.
Anything for Miss Rayler? Thank you. You want to do that?
Yeah, Lisa is not able to be with us tonight, so I'm just going to take you over that very quickly. The youth enrichment, again, things are always happening and despite the interruptions by the weather, we still have very active youth enrichment activities along with youth recreations. As I indicated tonight, the donations for the summer rec program have been coming in and of course, we're in planning stage for those as well. The adult enrichment, we had the 55 plus driving class here and it is a real honor and privilege to be able to host that during our school day and not interrupt our students. The meeting takes place here in the forum room and it's a very nice addition. Our attendees appreciate the fact that they can come out during the day when it's light and secure that discount for their insurance, so very rewarding to be able to offer that for our citizens. Adult recreation, again, lots of activities going on. Peak Fitness, they're going with a second session of that and then badminton and adult pickleball is coming up here, so again, lots of activities going for it. The kids' club highlights, the average number of students again is very good and continues to be very steady. The Little B preschool, we're working on the registration for the 19, 20 school year and we worked on facilitating how we envisioned that to work with reducing from the three current staff members down to two, so again, we're able to make that with some of the suggestions and ideas, not only for myself, but from Mrs. Lawson, so. The ECFE classes are going well on Monday evenings and Friday mornings and they're in the process for following through with the daddy-daughter dance, which takes place after the prom. And then we have an early childhood screening that's set for Friday, April 5th and again, things are in the planning stages for that as well. So that is her report for this moment.
Any questions on the community? Okay, Mr. Shepard, the elementary school report.
Yes, thank you. When I did this report, it was right before the snow was coming and I didn't come back, so there's a few things I'm going to add on to this. Our Trojan pride table is always strong, we also have Trojan gold tickets outside that we're not approving on this. Our La Crosse Community Theater is coming this Thursday and it's something that the kindergarten through fifth grade students, it's so nice, we have our auditorium and the whole group can go in and when the actors come in, they're just amazed, they're just like, this is just wonderful and they just feel so blessed to be here and perform, which is nice. Beth Nelson, like Miss Rayler said, is going to be done, but she, the reading month is planned and she has set everything up with Dr. Seuss, which is Friday, her last day. We will be doing an end of try assembly for K-5, early childhood actually will be coming as well. And at the end, we have different activities throughout the assembly and then we're going to have a surprise from Mrs. Nelson. I got a book and we're going to spend these students draw little pictures, little messages to her as we can get in in the next couple of days. The WSU play is coming then too, a month later and then at the end of it, and Mrs. Nelson said she would be returning because it's, she's worked really hard on this and would like to be included and I, of course, welcome her back to be a part of when we do give off bikes and are planning six bikes again this year. The FFA, having the ice cream treat, we had one group have theirs Thursday, it was supposed to be Wednesday and Thursday and then John Linder said, how about Thursday, Monday? And it's perfect, so we had Thursday and now Thursday, Tuesday. So, we have our last ice cream tomorrow and I know they set it up at concession stands as well at some of the ball games and it was a big hit, a lot of people are enjoying that. Then all my updates for classroom updates from the teaching staff, a lot happening, a lot going on. And Mrs. Brown is always excited, one of the biggest things right now is our fourth grad is getting... I got a book and we're gonna have as many students draw little pictures, little messages to her as we can get in in the next couple of days. The W S U play is coming then too, a month later and then at the end of it, and Mrs. Nelson said she would be returning because it's, she's worked really hard on this and would like to be included and I, of course, welcomed her back to be a part of when we do give all the bikes and applying six bikes again this year. The F F A, having the ice cream treat, we had one group have theirs Thursday, it was supposed to be Wednesday and Thursday and then John Lemon said, how about Thursday, Monday? And it's perfect, so we had Thursday and now Thursday, Tuesday. So we'll have our last ice cream tomorrow and I know they set it up at concession stands as well at some of the ball games and it was a big hit. A lot of people are enjoying that. Then all my updates for classroom updates from the teaching staff, a lot happening, a lot going on. And Mrs. Brown is almost excited. One of the biggest things right now is our fourth graders get that grade eight kids wellness program. That's when all the state students come in as well and it's, it's a lot of fun having a fourth grader, she comes home with all these great ideas now and I limit this, do this, have this, don't drink this, don't eat this. So it's a real good program. It's only once a week, so for about eight weeks. But very nice opportunities for the kids to be with other, and they get in small groups with a person from Winona State, so it's only little team and the whole big gym, so. And I too want to thank the school board for all the time and dedication to our school. Much greatly appreciated and peppered with a new superintendent and that is just wonderful. Thank you.
Questions for Australia? Thank you. Ms. Phil, middle high school.
Thank you. First one here, I brought some toys down from our 3D printers upstairs. As you can see, we've got them up and running and our CAD class, prototype engineering CAD class with Mr. King, he has kids throughout the trimester that have been designing on this on shape program, some computer and graphing stuff. And as they finish the program, they're now getting to use the 3D printers that we've got them in and got a little Trojan horse here, a little cube and a little flower pot and they're printing many things up there and trying different stuff. So it's kind of a cool thing that, that they've opened up that we got through the Harlan Fault Grant this fall and art classes are gonna jump on board with it and I know we're gonna introduce it to elementary, middle school too, just for a chance for kids to play with something new and different that they wouldn't see. And there's a couple more up there that were, that just finished today and Mr. King must have set them on Thursday. There's a car up there and a little elephant and stuff like that. So kids are getting to design and print, it's kind of cool that they're, they're seeing from design that they make to a finished product that's done. So kind of a cool thing that we have upstairs. Next, the Winona Chamber of Commerce there was invited to a little meeting last week and they have a reach program, it's called, where they connect businesses in the area with students and these students are part of this program. They go out and about and right now they're manufacturing healthcare. They get some immersion programs, they get some internships, stuff like that and it's just kind of trying to find ways to expand it from Winona to area schools to be part of it and have indicated that we'd be potentially interested to see how it could fit in with some of ours. In addition, we work very closely with the Chamber of Commerce here, helping our kids out. We have a junior day or career exploration day where Jen Hingle does a good job of setting it up and we have our kids go to all the, a bunch of different spots in town here to look at some different career fields that are right in town. And then we have that senior day that I've talked about a couple of times with other area schools where we go up to Minnesota State Southeast and they're able to get interview skills, meet up with potential employers in the area as well. And then Minnesota State Southeast is a, is a big partner with us because kids can take some classes here that count on dual credit and then we're also pushing and working in some of those C T E or hands-on areas. We have one student who's actually in the prototype engineering certificate program. It's a program, they go every Monday night and they take classes there and when he graduates, so there's three or four from when they graduate here in May, they'll have a prototype engineering certificate from Minnesota State Southeast, while at the same time having a high school diploma. There's one student that is going to continue his degree and get the actual whole degree from Minnesota State Southeast. So it's a great opportunity because for the longest time, P S E O concurrent enrollment was always thought to be for those high end kids, high achievers and we're finding ways to get some of those technical skills, trade skills, kids to get hands-on experience, get college credits while they're in high school and to walk out into meaningful jobs and to kind of get that. So it's kind of a great thing with a lot of area schools to partnership and show that we've got great jobs here in our area. As we mentioned before, National F F A Week, we got our honor band at Luther there, we have some students that'll be attending that next weekend. Our fine arts night is kind of a big thing that we do at night to celebrate and promote our, our fine arts. Our high school band and choir, they have their large group contest on the following Monday, so it's a great rehearsal, dry run, whatever you want to call it, the night before they play, or two nights, two, three nights before they play some music. We've got a couple of representatives from our speech team will give performances and then out in the comments area, you have an art gallery type with, of course, projects from our art department. We've got industrial tech and A, interior design classes, there'll probably be some 3D printing, some big woodworking projects out there. Just a great way to invite and get the community in to see some of those almost unnighted displays. If there's nothing else going on, we can more than make a big deal and try to get them in to watch that. We had our cancer awareness week before and a Blizzard Bowl and just lots of stuff, we had walking tacos at games, musical chairs, just raising some money for cancer awareness and then Mrs. Berger in the middle school wrapped their Blizzard Bowl in with that. Last week, on President's Day on the 18th, took a group of 12 National Arts Society students to Channel and Food Bank in Rochester and just got to do some packaging of some crackers and cereal and stuff like that. And as you see, it was 13,000 crackers in little individual packets that they packaged into probably four or five in a bag and then 532 pounds of cereal. We had a big box and we had to scoop out the cereal and put it in the pound and a half. So the kids are on hairnets and stuff like that and just got to then see, then get a tour of the facility and just kind of see how far it reaches out and it's not just a food shelter in Rochester, how that bank reaches area wide and even Simcat here in town gets some of their food from the, the bank there and just explaining how much food goes out and just a great experience for our kids and, and learning too of where all this food comes in. So a great day for our kids there. And then on March 18th, I think Shannon Copper's kind of leading this, a screening, there's growing up in the digital age, a documentary film is put out there, we're gonna show it to all of our fourth through 12th grade students in the day, during the day and then there'll be a parent screening at night or a parent showing at night as well of just, again, documented as how technology impacts students. So just trying to find that balance of some of our kids are attached to their devices and as parents sometimes don't know how to take them away and how to work with them and just a great documentary. So hopefully we can get a, a good showing of that as well. Do you have any questions that can entertain? No?
Any questions for Mr. Phil? Uh, for activities for.
Yep, since our last regular monthly meeting, we've had three of our activities wrap up. The one act play, it's in the report there, we, we finished second in the conference competition which we hosted here. We went over to Caledonia and we won the subsection and advanced to the section competition, which was on February 2nd at Castle Madderville. Strong showing, but we finished fourth, so we did not advance on at that point. Winter dance, that one wrapped up on the second weekend in February, February 9th at the section competition, which was hosted by Lake City this year. Did not advance on to the state level there, but still wrapped up a, a very successful season and they're very excited about moving forward, growing the program even more next year. And the girls' basketball just wrapped up last week, last Thursday. We received the number 16 seeds, we hosted a tournament game here on the 7th, uh, sorry, on the, I'm gonna look in at here quick. On the 19th we did against the number 17 seed Schaefer Academy, we won that 68-38. Won over to Grand Meadow, who was the number one seed and unfortunately did not prevail in that competition. So the girls' basketball season wrapped up there. Boys are just entering the tournament this week. We've had, fortunate to get the number three seed, which means we have a bye, we do not play tomorrow. We wait to see who wins between Selton and Glenville Evans and we'll be hosting them here on Thursday night. With a win there, we would advance to play the following Monday, which would be March 4th, to the likely team that we would face would be Grand Meadow, at least they're the highest seed and that would be over in Rochester. Wrestling, just wrapped up a busy weekend of section competition. That was a Friday, Saturday, just, this is last Saturday. Top two individuals, that's individual section, so the top two individuals move on to the state tournament. The L A R P team has three individuals moving on. Unfortunately, none are from Rushford, none are from Russia Peterson, but Ross Herbert, he finished first from Lewiston Altera, his brother Noah Herbert, as well as Gables Belts finished second. So those will be three of our L A R P wrestlers that will be going. They're doing a formal send-off over in Lewiston, so we'll try to make our way for our, our RP kids to get over there. A send-off on Thursday, they do their weigh-ins Thursday night and then they compete Friday and Saturday. As far as our, our Rushford Peterson students, Don McJenkins finished third and Ethan Sence finished fourth, so they wrapped up their senior years very successful as well. Looking to one competition or one season that's still going on, which Mr. Taylor noted, noted a little bit, is speech. For those not familiar with speech, it's a very quick season, their first competition is February 9th and then we compete very quickly through seven weeks and then it enters into the subsection section and then state, state wrapping up by mid-April. We have a great team with Mrs., Mrs. Michael as well as Forrest Musselman coaching that. We've got 25 members competing in 13 categories and they're having a great start to their season. We host a competition here, not this weekend, but the following on March 9th, so we're excited about that. Jumping around here, but want to thank you for the hires of those track coaches. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion on there, but I just wanted to share a little bit in terms of Jenny Helgemo, who you hired. She comes with four years at a different district as well as one year of experience here. She coached junior high track at Cockaport City before coming over here and she'll be looking to fill that role of, of working a lot with our junior high kids. So that's great. And then Haley Mock, who you may or may not know, she works over in Peterson, but she comes originally from North Dakota where she was a state champion in the pole vault, competed at college at the pole vault and that'd be a role that she'll be filling for us here as a pole vault coach. So thank you very much for supporting those hires. And then one last update is the golf co-op, I just want to update the board here that you approved it as far as the formation of our co-op with, with Lewiston Altera. The board at Lewiston Altera also approved that, so now it's just been moved on to the state high school league. Their board of directors for final approval, but everything's in place for us to, to be competing as L A R P golf with Russia Peterson as the host this year, if the snow ever melts. So, which if you look at extended forecasts, this is one time I'm really hoping the fore, the forecasters are wrong because it doesn't look like we'll get above freezing between now and the 11th of March, which is our first day of track and our first day of softball. So it'll be a challenge. But I'd entertain any questions you may have.
Anything for you, sir? Thank you.
Before you move to your information section, I do have two other things to present to the board as a part of my report. First of all, on behalf of the board, I extended our condolences and sympathies to the Metz family on Roger Metz's passing. He's been held on February 18th in Winona, did attend on behalf of the board and the district. Roger served as a school board member from 2005 through 2012 and so was instrumental in helping us secure the legislation as well as the passage of the referendum. So I extended, again, our condolences and sympathies to the family on behalf of RP schools. And then one other item, just to informational for you is that last Friday, February 22nd, we hosted a tour here from the La Creston Facility Task Force. They are going out for a bond recording for the construction of a new elementary school. So we took the, they took the opportunity to bring a bus down here, a lot of 25 members of the task force to see if they're staying what we have to offer and it's very rewarding to give them the opportunity to see what possibilities they may be exploring with their new initiative for La Creston School this year.
Okay, anybody have anything else? We're back here again, up from today, 18th of March, we have our regular board meeting. I understand Mr. Tom Smith signed the contract. We're on our way to New Era. Okay, look for a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor of adjourn? Can I say aye? All in support. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add you guys.